Okay, we just ask all rise please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. I'd like to welcome all of us to today's city council meeting of June the 2nd, 2020. We do have Zoom, so most of our staff are zooming in, some of our council is zooming in, the rest of us have physically distanced, we're in the environment that everything's been sanitized, and some of us are wearing masks as well. So I think we're doing all the things that we're asked to do through the protocols of the province, and we're going to continue on as we're deemed an essential service, the municipality, we're going to continue on. Starting off with today's agenda, the first order of business would be the singing of "Oh, Canada." I will introduce this before I'll ask our clerk to hit the play button, and of course Counselor Thompson will remove his mask to sing along so we can hear him. I'd like to introduce Sibilla Malekzade. Sibilla Malekzade. Sibilla is five years old. She goes to Mary Ward Elementary School. She sings in the junior choir at Stanford Lane United Church. She loves science and wants to be an engineer one day when she grows up. And we'd like to thank Sibilla for sharing this recorded performance of "Oh, Canada" with us today. So, five years old Sibilla. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Clerk.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sibilla Malekzade. I go to Mary Ward School, and I'm five years old. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true earth, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Wow, great job. Oh, my gosh. Well, Sibilla, if you're at home watching this, and everyone watching, we want to thank you. You sing much more professional than the five years that we might have thought. That was fantastic, and they're lucky to have you at Lundys Lane, at Stanford Lane United Church, and also at Mary Ward. So, thank you very much. So, first order of business is pecuniary interest. Do we have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I have two that deal with the Niagara Catholic District School Board, my employer. First one is F-202023, and there's a refund on there for the school board. And the second one is just a remittance check that goes to the school board. It's 00279-0006, and I'll leave this on my desk for the clerk.
Thank you for that, Counselor Peter Angelo. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one check. It's for Niagara Falls Art Gallery. I sit on the board as a resident. Check 437220, April 22nd, 2020, for $2,333.33. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have any other counselors with declaration? Counselor Campbell, yes?
Yes, I have a conflict. Check number 437590 was made out to myself.
Okay, thank you.
Set that into the clerk.
Thank you. And for myself, I have check number 437178, check made out to myself as well. And I've got the form as well, so we'll hand those in. If you have hard copies, be sure to hand those in to the clerk before the end of the meeting, please, and thank you. Okay, so we're going to go back up the agenda, and next is to the mayor's announcements. Of course, everybody always anticipates this part of the meeting, especially Counselor Peter Angelo. He always wants me to give little tips on what's in it, and I just save it for the meeting.
For some reason, Your Worship, you went from last on the agenda, then it became middle of the agenda, and now it's first of the agenda. I'm not sure how that happened.
Well, with any luck, the direction we're going, it'll be before the meeting next time. You won't even have to listen to it.
That would be the best. I'll vote in favor.
I remember that being approved by Counselor.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so the mayor's notes are brief. First off, our condolences to John Deetnbeck, the father of Tom Deetnbeck, of our fire, the loss of John Deetnbeck. He's the father of Tom Deetnbeck of our Fire Services Department. Regarding COVID-19, I'm going to ask in a second Counselor Campbell to speak up, but we had a grocery giveaway recently that took place at the McBain Center, and we were joined by, led by Counselor Campbell, and joined by Counselor Dubrowski, Peter Angelo, and Strange, and we gave away an awful lot of food for over 500 people. I understand it was around 50 pounds each, and I'm going to ask Counselor Campbell if you'd give us a little bit of an overview of that successful day.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, it was very successful. The lineup was almost back to Montrose Road when I drove up early just to see how things were going. Yes, there was approximately 500 people there, and they practiced social distancing, and I have to be honest with you, I thought it ran very, very smoothly. I also want to thank LaCocos. They provided the bags for the giveaway. And you mentioned city council members and yourself. Senior staff were there as well to help, and there were several employees actively involved. The staff and board from Project Share was in the event as volunteering. Soup Kitchen had people there to help volunteer. The staff from Falls View Group, I think that they were room attendants. They came down, there was about a dozen of them, which was fantastic. And there was individual volunteers that had called me personally to say they wanted to participate. Staff from Hart Niagara participated. Staff from Regional Niagara participated as well. Homeless Committee Board members participated. DSBN members as well participated, and I want to say a special thanks to Serge Atkinson for playing the bagpipes. It was awesome. And went wonderfully well. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Counselor Campbell, and I just want to say thank you also to the anonymous donor who obviously didn't want to give, you know, his name. And the other thing I found that was interesting is some of the board at Project Share and the Soup Kitchen said these were not their clientele that were getting the food, which I found interesting. I said, well, then who are they? And they said, well, these are the people falling between the cracks, the working poor. And I had one lady in particular, she works for the Niagara Parks Commission, and she said, do you know when we're going to go back to work? We really need to get back to work. You know, $2,000, I appreciate it, but it's not enough, and we need to get back to work. So, it's obvious, she said, this would be just enough to carry their family a little bit longer. So, I want to say thank you, Counselor Campbell, for taking the lead on this, putting it together. It was a big success. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Just an update, the mayor's back to business COVID recovery team. We're just finishing up our reports, and there'll be some action items coming forward to council with some decisions very soon. Infrastructure updates, if you noticed, out front of City Hall, we've laid the sod now, the old building's been removed, and it looks great. So, well done to staff, and beautiful courtyard area. It looks much better. I'm glad the construction's over. There was mud everywhere for a long, long time. Costco, construction has started. They broke ground, so we're very excited that that's taking place, and a lot of people will be very happy to learn that that's on its way, and they're building. Robinson Street Bridge finally been removed. For anyone taking a drive down there, it looks really funny because now you can see so far, having that, you know, bridge that didn't serve a purpose removed. So, great job on, from our staff on getting that done as well. And our city amenities are slowly opening up as part of the province, turning the dimmer switch to open things up. The boat ramp opened, and Chippewa Oaks Park track is open, the dog parks, tennis courts are opening. Bit by bit, we're getting life back to normal, the new normal. Street sweepers, we received lots of calls from street sweepers. They are starting this week, and they're going to blitz for two weeks. And within two weeks, we're going to have the entire city covered. And of course, it's weather permitting. If we get any torrential downpours, it gets slightly delayed. But next year, you'll be happy to know they're going to be, in May, earlier this year, because of COVID, we were delayed. But next year will be at least a month earlier for everyone asking. And lastly, I want to thank Counselor Strange for representing the city at the Dwyer Hamilton Paralegal Services Food Giveaway to frontline workers at Food Basics on Montrose Road. Next council meeting will be in a couple of weeks. It'll be Tuesday, June the 23rd, and it will be at 1:00 again. Same place, same channel. So, thank you for that, council. So, now we're going to move on to our, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk. Yeah, did I, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. My bad. Can I get, and we don't actually, there it is. Adoption of the minutes from the May 12th meeting, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor, that's approved. Thank you. Thanks for that catch, Mr. Clerk. So, we're at item 5.1 of the reports, and we have a report from Finance. Do we, Mr. CAO, do we need any explanation or direction from CFO?
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe there was a presentation, but Ms. Clark's on Zoom.
Okay. Right, it's our tenants that are in our city facilities, and obviously, they're not allowed in, so we're not charging them a rent. That's basically what it is. So, we've got three recommendations, four recommendations, rather, moved by Counselor Thompson. Counselor Carrio, you want to? Oh, yeah, of course. Do we not do the YMCA grant? I don't see them on there. YMCA? Miss Clark, are you hearing that question from Counselor Carrio about the YMCA not being part of this list? Kathy or Tiffany?
I can speak to it. Kathy here. The YMCA does not pay us monthly rent, so therefore they're, they don't owe us anything.
They just pay for a share of the utilities.
Okay, thank you for that. So, we've got the motion made by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrio. If there's no further questions, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Okay, and Counselor Peter Angelo is on which one? On? Okay, so next up, item 5.2. We've got 2018 Closed Capital Project Variance Report, with a conflict by Counselor Peter Angelo? Oh, on the previous one? Okay, got it. So, we've got a recommendation. The council received the report, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor LaCoco. Yeah, right. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a conversation with Finance Director Ms. Clark, and I was really impressed with the report. It's really nice to get an update about where our capital projects are, and a couple of things came to me as I was reading the report. Some of the funds are tied up for a few years if they don't get completed, so this is a good idea to let us know what's going on. And I think through the process of when we're putting estimates on it, finance is looking at it, so there's not large estimates with money sitting there and not being able to use it for other projects. So, it was a really good report. Thank you so much.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that. Okay, so if there's no further comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, thank you. Item 5.3, Annual Statement of Remuneration and Expenses Updated, which now include the attendance. Do we have some questions or comments of city council? Counselor Peter Angelo.
Just a question, Your Worship. In regards to the attendance, does it matter how long someone stays? I mean, I'm kind of guessing, looking at the report, that as long as you come, you're marked present, and it doesn't matter how long you stay. Would that be the way that staff approached it?
Mr. Clerk, how do we currently do the attendance?
For this report, any counselor that arrived early, sorry, or arrived late or left early, they were marked as being present. However, the minutes of the meeting would indicate at what point a counselor may have left or arrived. I know that in some municipalities, attendance is shown right on the council portion of the municipality's webpage, and in some cases, attendance is also highlighted to show when a counselor has arrived early or late. There's no definition in our procedural bylaw that talks about being present for a portion, or a majority, or half of a meeting. So, I know it's a little bit all over the place with that answer, but currently, it's not in our procedural bylaw. But this addition to the remuneration report was as a result of a motion of council to include the attendance.
Counselor Peter Angelo, is that good? Okay, thank you. Counselor Carrio.
Well, Your Worship, most of the boards and things that I sit on, you have to be at the meeting for a certain amount of time before you're marked as present. Could we maybe have staff look into it and see what other municipalities maybe do, and come back and see if we want to have this as the way we do it, or if we want to look at changing it? We just see how everyone else does it?
Okay, so that's a motion from?
Maybe come back.
Yeah, our CAO is going to jump in too?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I know right now Mr. Mattson and Solicitor were reviewing our procedural bylaw, because it's been in place for just a little over a year, and we're just kind of fine tuning it. We could include that, if you'd like, to make the motion when we bring a report back on any of the other revisions to the procedural bylaw as well.
Yep, you're good with that? Okay, so, motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we have the report brought back from staff regarding changes to the procedural bylaw, including attendance policy. Is there any discussion to that? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that. Item 5.4, Managing the Financial Impact on Our Parking Budget. So, we've got two recommendations. One, that the report be received, and second, the staff be directed to enforce parking meters and resume issuing tickets as of July 1st. So, what's the direction of council on the report? Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two questions. I know it says parking budget, but further in the report, it talks about no penalty for non-payment of taxes. So, I guess my question is, with the state of emergency going to June 30th, has there been discussion or can we discuss now about moving the non-payment of taxes and the penalty for residents? So, that was my first question. And my second question was, being the financial part, was the $4.2 million for the police, for the OLG. I know we brought it up before, and there was supposed to be a report coming back, so I'd like to talk about that as well.
Okay, so why don't we get Tiffany? Tiffany, could you weigh in on both of those issues? So, first question is in regard to the residential taxes, and the second is in regard to the $4.2 million for the casino unit.
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. For the taxes, even for everybody, residential, commercial, industrial. Annie and I are working on a report for the June 23rd meeting to kind of present some options on where we want to go with the, all the different waivers that are in place, the penalty, the disconnection, the NSF fees, all of that. So, that'll come June 23rd. And then, your second question about the police, I believe our CAO addressed this and the mayor at the last meeting, and that, jump in if I'm incorrect, Ken, we're probably not going to be paying them for the rest of the year. It's going to be dependent on what we bring in.
Did, you want to add to that at all, Ken? Yeah, got you.
So, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, one of the things we'll do is, Ms. Clark is monitoring the casino situation. As you know, it's not opened up again. If it does get reopened, we're really looking at this as a whole calendar year kind of scenario, because it'll really be important for the last two quarters as business ramps back up. So, we really won't have a definitive answer. But our position, and we have spoken to the region, is that our position right now, until we know, we have no intention of paying anything further to the police until we report back to council on what that total impact looks like.
Okay, you're good with that? Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Being around here, why you deal with situations, and I have had numerous calls over the years where there has been commercial property vacant, residential, and for a long period of time, months in some cases, and they indicated that there is legislation at the provincial level that says that they can apply to impact the assessment at the province to have a reduction in their assessment for that period of time. Does this affect the virus situation that we're in right now, and would anybody in that situation that has been told to close by the provincial government would have the opportunity to apply for changes in their assessment and their taxes? Good question.
Hey, Tiffany, did you hear that question? And have you had discussions in that regard with your local area treasures as well?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, we have, and that's some of the stuff Annie's going to include in the report, the different options that will be available. I'm not quite sure that changing your assessment for this year is one of the options, but the vacancy rebate, if you're closed for 90 days or more, is always an option. That'll be identified in the report, along with all of the programs that the other levels of government are also offering. And we'll put in, we're going to put in a little bit of detail about how assessments work. Your assessment, when they review your revenue and expenses for this year, that'll be affected in a future assessment. So, we're going to try to put that language in the report to explain how those work. It won't impact this year, but when you get reassessed, they'll take into account your, for your history.
But being closed, do they, does the province have the ability to accept requests for reduction in their taxes?
Do you hear that, Tiffany?
I do. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I promise that will all be included.
Included in the report. That's great. Thank you. That's great. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
We're still on the parking budget?
We are still on the, yes, we are. Yeah.
I'll move it through.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we move the parking budget. Is there any other discussion on the parking budget? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay, thank you for that. Okay, moving along. 5.5, 5G Health Concerns. So, we've got a recommendation for the information of council, and as you can see, well, maybe I'm going to ask since, actually, does, Sean, you don't have a mic, do you?
Unfortunately, no.
Oh, okay, well, that was beautiful. So, basically, if you read the report, it comes down to two main things. Number one, it's a federal issue, and number two, there's no science saying that it does cause cancer, and none saying that it doesn't cause cancer. That's what it says. So, that's the report. It, I think it further illustrates what we received last time when this came to council, and so now it's up to council in what direction we want to take on this. Thank you. Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the staff for providing the report. I know there's four basic concerns about 5G. One of them is health, one of them is security. I'm not going to speak about either one of them. But the big two, and it's highlighted in the report, is the lack of notification when and where the towers and antennas are going to be installed, and the lack of the consultation and input of our residents. I'd like to make a parallel. When we looked at the cannabis grow ops, we received notification, we gave notification to all of the residents to know we were going to speak about it. All of the public was notified, and they had an opportunity to provide input, and we were able to consult with them. And we received information from Health Canada regarding the health guidelines of what they felt for cannabis grow ops were. And from there, we took all of that information, but at the end of the day, we really listened to the residents after they'd been consulted, what their concerns were. So, even though that we had Health Canada information, we went a different way and decided not to go with that. We also, there's another parallel with the Airbnb situation. I know there's legalities in certain areas of Niagara Falls, but the same thing. We notified everybody. They had an opportunity to be consulted and to give input, and then we made a decision based on that. So, after reading the Arid and Bearless memo, it is a year old, and I haven't seen that memo before, but there were a few things that I wanted to comment on. One of the memo comments is, how this technology will be established, implemented in Canadian municipalities, it remains largely unclear. I think that's important. But there is a concern that no one really knows that the residents are not going to be consulted, and that's what I want to focus on today, that they're not consulted, and I don't think it's fair for our residents to just receive something without having that consultation and input. If we would look at, if we would look at old technology, we have guidelines and rules. Now, we have new technology, and that new technology is not covered in the old guidelines and rules. So, just because it's not in there, doesn't mean it's exempt, but it now takes away the consultation. So, that's the, that's the really big point that I want to make on this. So, the Arid and Bearless memo also talks about, although the city does not have jurisdiction, and that's what you just talked about, to pass a bylaw that inhibits the location of 5G, it can exert influence in other areas, specifically about the consultation. So, I would like to focus on that, and if we can look at the Health Canada information, I know they've created guidelines that have kept us safe for many years on many products. However, Health Canada has changed their position many times on asbestos, lead paint, vaping, and more recently, talcum powder. So, all of these items have had severe health effects. The implementation of 5G without municipal consultation is not satisfactory. I believe that we need a seat at the table. The public deserves notification, consultation, and input. I'd like to put the following motion forward based on the Arid and Bearless memo, specifically on page 5, 3.0, that the city of Niagara Falls requests the federal government to review. Number one, the necessity for municipal consultation of 5G placement of antennas and towers through the antenna towering siting procedure. Number two, the removal of the up to 25% increase of height exemption of existing antenna systems, which would allow for consultation. And what that is, is say if you have a tower that's 100 feet, 100 meters, whatever it is, they can increase the height of it. As long as it's under 25%, there's no consultation. So, that, that's an issue there. Remove the less than 15-meter height exemption for new antenna systems, which would allow for consultation. What that is, is if there's a pole outside that's less than 15 meters, there's no consultation. These small antennas are more invasive than the large towers that were miles away from your home. The small antenna towers can be right outside your home, outside your child's school, but because of the exemption, they're of the exemption, there is no consultation. The fourth one is to remove the non-tower structure exemptions, and that's the antennas on buildings, water towers, lamp posts, et cetera, again, to allow for more consultation. And then the last issue I would like to bring up, that's the motion, but I'll bring up the second motion, and then we can speak to it, is the liability. The city of Niagara Falls, Niagara Falls Holding Company and the Niagara broadband would be benefiting and profiting from the installation of 5G. What is our liability when there is a health claim? What is our liability when antenna towers are on public property? What is our liability when the antennas, towers are on private property? I'd like to bring a motion forward that staff, legal, and risk management bring back a report on our liability where there's a health claim regarding 5G. Now, some of the larger insurance companies like Lloyds, Lloyds of London, and Pacific Gas and Energy, they would not, they would not provide insurance for claims against 5G on health concerns. They have amended that since last year, and there's a lot of exemptions on that. So I would like a report to be brought back regarding our liability on a health claim.
Okay, so you're, you have two motions, sorry.
Correct.
Did you want to deal with one, and I know Alex is gonna, wants to address something in, I assume, the first part of the motion. So the first, you had four parts to the first
Do you want to do the second one, which is just a basic one first, and we can get that off the table? That's about staff bringing a report regarding liability?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Councilor DeCoco, seconded by Councilor Aynoni. Maybe we can get a little bit of feedback from Mr. Lustig on the phone. Did you hear the second part of, or this motion? Did you hear the motion, Ed, that, that, what the request is?
Yes, I did, Your Worship. I heard both parts. One is a resolution asking the federal government to consider changing the exclusions, and the second is a resolution asking staff for a report on liability. So the second one, I think that motion is something that staff can respond to with a report. I don't have an answer off the top of my head as to whether or not it would be liability. I think, I think it's something that we need to check with our insurer. And the council makes the point that there has been some discussion about this subject in the insurance realm, so it's something that we should probably take up with our insurer. So I, I think that that is something that staff can certainly come back to council with and report on. On the first, if you're asking me about that, I think the resolution is something that council can pass. I think the air and barrelless report clearly says that the municipality has no power to legislate or regulate in this area because it's federal jurisdiction exclusively. So there's nothing that you can actually do in terms of a real act by the council, but there's nothing to prevent you from passing a motion to lobby, essentially lobby the federal government to make some changes in the rules. So that resolution is legally in order. Whether any of the items that are being requested to be changed, or exclusions are requested to be taken away, isn't something that I can pass judgment on. I don't know if that's a good or bad idea. I'm just saying that you can certainly put that forward as a resolution to the government if that's what you want to do. So those are all of the comments that I think I can make at this stage.
Okay, so on the legal end, that's the first part. Is there any questions or comments of council on the legal part? Okay, so then we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Just the one part?
Yeah, just the legal part, yep. Okay, and that is unanimous, so that part was passed. And did you want to reword the first part? And then Alex, we'll get you to, I know you wanted to say something, so you can weigh in on the planning aspect.
That the city of Niagara Falls requests the federal government to review, and that speaks to Mr. Ludzigs regarding lobbying and not making a resolution to, to remove it. The necessity for municipal consultation of 5G placement of antennas and towers through the antenna tower sighting procedure. Number two, the removal of the up to 25% increase of height exemption of existing antennas, systems which would allow for consultation. Number three, the removal of less than 15 meters height exemption for new antenna systems which would allow for consultation. And the fourth one, the removal of non-tower structure exemption, antennas on buildings, water towers, lamp posts, et cetera, which would allow for consultation.
Okay. We've got a motion by Councilor DeCoco. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Aynoni. Now, Mr. Hirlavich, you wanted to comment on the planning aspect, I assume, of this?
Excuse me, yes, Mr. Mayor. My comments were really addressed by Mr. Lustig's comments, so I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. Do we have any questions of council? Councilor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. I can't support that motion. However, if it's not successful, I would like to see a motion that we ask the federal government to further get involved in scientific investigation so that we can have a solid answer as to whether there are health concerns or not.
Okay. Counselor Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you know, I've been, since all this 5G's been coming up the last, I don't know, six months to a year, and, you know, I've been doing a little bit of research, and you look at people who are totally with it, people are against it, the science, you know, some are saying it's safe, some are saying it's not safe. Nobody knows. You know, my, basically, I'm wondering that the health aspects of 5G, and in particular with children, I've, I've seen a couple instances down in the states where there's been some towers put up near schools, and there's been a few kids have been diagnosed with, with different types of cancers. Not that it's proven that it's from there, and it could just be a coincidence. I just want to make sure it's, is safe for our children. You know, if we could turn back time, and, and, you know, would we invent cigarettes, you know, would we, you know, single-use plastics? I go down to Sobeys, and now they're not even using single-use plastics anymore, they're back to the, the old paper bags. So it's something that I just want to make sure that five years down the line, that we're saying, man, if we had the choice again, would we do that? I would rather make sure that, you know, China or whoever is, is kind of the people who are doing it for a year, and then we find out it's safe, and they've done their numbers before we step in as a country to put in. Are we going to be behind the eight ball? I'm not sure. Is there enough technology with 5G? We're always saying, children, you know, they're, they're on their iPads too much, you know, and everything. Now they're making it so much faster. And I just want to know that the effects that it's having on, on children, especially, you know, raise money for, for childhood cancer, awareness and stem cell research. I want to make sure it's not affecting any children. And I don't think anyone in this council room would want that five years down the line, saying, man, we made a mistake. You know, you're seeing it all over the world, and I see, you know, conspiracy theories, and people saying, oh, Bill Gates started this, and, and all this stuff, to be able to get a vaccine for coronavirus and 5Gs, and I don't believe that. But I do believe that we could wait a little bit, and I would, I would love the federal government to wait a bit and just see how other countries and how it's affecting people there, especially the children. I always kind of laugh at Louis CK's bit when he's up in the, up in the airplane, and he's, and he's up there, and the guy beside him says, oh, the flight doesn't have Wi-Fi. He's like, Wi-Fi? You're 40,000 feet up in the sky in a seat. You know, this is the miracle of flight. You know, so I think, you know, technology, I wish it would just slow down a bit. And if there's a time when I think it should slow down, it's now. Look at the coronavirus, we're going outside now, and appreciate the parks and animals and stuff a little bit more. So I, it's just a comment, but I just wish that the feds would just, I know we don't have a choice. I, I looked on the telecommunications act, you know, we don't have a choice in putting up towers, and it doesn't look like we do. But it's just a comment. I wish our country would just fall back a little bit and wait to see with other countries and how it's affecting them first.
So, Counselor, just to be clear, you're supporting Councilor Campbell's?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's not up yet, you know, we're not dealing with that yet. Are there any other comments to Councilor DeCoco's resolution? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. The resolution that's on the floor right now is simply asking the federal government to go back and review their policies, is it not? I mean, we're not really making any decisions, we're only asking the federal government to review what they're doing right now.
Do you want to repeat those one more time, Counselor, just so we're clear, because I think the water's been a little muddied, we're talking here in two different things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the city of Niagara Falls requests the federal government to review. Number one, the necessity for municipal consultation of 5G placement of antennas and towers through the antenna tower sighting procedure. Number two, the removal of the up to 25% increase of height exemption of existing antenna systems which would allow for consultation. The removal of the less than 15 meter height exemption for the new antenna systems which would allow for consultation, and the removal of the non-tower structure exemption, antennas on buildings, water towers, lamp posts, et cetera, which would allow for consultation, and it's all to review. So speaking to Counselor Peter Angelo's, it's asking the government to review all of these, based on consultation.
Okay, okay. So is there any other comments or questions on the motion?
Can I just get a clarification?
Yep.
We're not asking in that motion for a public consultation here in Niagara Falls, just the opportunity to, for the consultation with the federal government.
Through the mayor, to Counselor Campbell, it's not for a public consultation in Niagara Falls, it's within the guidelines to allow consultation in general, because all of these exceptions say, well, if it's up to 25% increase of a tower, no consultation. If it's under 15 meters on a lamp pole, no consultation. So I just want to bring forward the review of consultation, that people have the, the opportunity for input.
Okay, well, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, okay, and that passes, that passes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, can we still have that motion from Counselor Campbell, just the health issues? Yeah, of course. Do you want to bring that forward?
Like Counselor Strange, I, I've investigated as much research as I can, and for something to be accepted, there's three things that it has to pass. It has to be reliable. In other words, you got a, two different groups, three different groups, and you're comparing the different groups that have been selected on a random basis. It has to be valid, and the validation comes from the, the studies that do the scientific method. And the third one, it has to be reproducible. For example, Lenis Pauling years ago came out with a study said that vitamin C is good for the common cold. How many people in this room take vitamin C for the common cold? Well, it has never been reproduced by any other study. It's not scientifically proven. So I, I would like to see that happen with the health, that they need to, to get more involved on a scientific basis to look at the potential health problems.
Okay, you heard the motion moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Strange. Is there any discussion to that motion? Call the vote, all those in favor. Okay, and that's approved as well. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on to item 5.6, tax increment-based grant application under the Lundys Lane CIP, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. We have discussion. Counselor DeCoco?
I have a question. I remember last time that when, when the builder was here, he was talking about affordable housing, and he said that it was rent, it was condos for sale. But in this report, it talks about rentals, provide more rental housing. Has something changed from the original application that it's rentals now? Because I can see the reduction of the, the taxes over the 10-year period if it's rental. But if it's for sale, there's only the common elements that the owner would own. So I want a clarification on that.
Okay, we can get Mr. Hirlavich, if you could weigh in on that aspect of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I think she was talking about that it could potentially be rented, but the last I knew they were going to be selling these properties. The, the grant basically expires once he sells those units. So the repayment program would start initially when he sells the units, as opposed to if they were rentals, they would continue for the entire 10-year period. So I know that's not totally clear, but the, the grant is not necessarily tied to being rental units.
Through the mayor, I think I understood the first point, saying it would expire if he sold the units, but then your last comment confused me, saying it's not tied to it. So I have no problem with the grant if it's rentals, and then if it's sold, it expires. But if it's not tied to rentals, then that, doesn't that mean it can go for sale? Sorry to confuse the issue.
Yeah. So what I meant to say is the grant is repayable to the city once he sells those units. He's going to, it's, you know, he's going to pay the grant, or, yeah, so it, he would have, yeah, the, the program would end. So, you know, so if he kept the units for one year, then he would be, you know, reimbursed on his taxes for that one year at 80% of the increase. And if he sold all of the units in the second year, then there would be no more funding for that program.
Yeah, Counselor?
Just on that point, what if he sells one unit one year and another unit or two units another year? How is, would there be a percentage, a proportion of it?
Would it be proportionate, Alex, if that was the case?
Yes, it'd be proportional.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Counselor Campbell?
That was my question.
Okay, that was your question. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, and that's approved. Thank you. Item 5.7, 3958 Cardinal Drive, the owner is looking, there's a recommendation here, let me just get it up here, sorry. The city council passed a bylaw on today's agenda to permit a retirement home with up to 116 living units in a building having a height varying from two to four stories. Counselor Thompson?
Be happy to move that. That property has been there vacant, excellent piece of property for this type of development, and we need it in our community. I was so moved.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Strange, seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Yes, Mr. Clerk?
I just want to point out that if council does have any questions for the owner, Mr. George Body, he is on standby to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Mr. Body? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
When's his son fighting again?
Yeah, when's, when's Lucas going to fight again? That's all we want to know. Okay, so that's approved unanimously, thank you for that. And thank you, George. Item 5.8, summer aquatics opening plan, so there's two recommendations.
Move the report, Your Worship.
Okay, one that we receive, and second that we are, will approve it, pending the lifting of the provincial emergency order. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor DeCoco, with questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor for, I guess, a question to Ms. Maldenhauer for the reservations, how will that work? Is that a phone-in system, an online system? What if people cancel on a regular basis? I just wanted more information on that.
Ms. Maldenhauer?
Yes, thank you. With the reservations, it would only be for the, the adult lane swim. So what would happen is the participants would call the pool that they wanted to go to for the adult swim. And normally with our adult swim, we, we attract maybe 15 to 10 people, so it should be fairly easy to, to manage the numbers.
Does that help? Okay, great, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, so did we get a motion? Yes, we did, right? Who did the motion?
Yep.
Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor DeCoco, that's right. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda, Your Worship.
Okay, okay, hold on. Counselor DeCoco's got something to lift at first.
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I'd like to pull the playground, MW 2020-12.
Okay, any, any other ones?
No.
Okay, so, yes, Counselor Campbell?
Does this motion cover the stop sign conversion review?
Yes.
It does?
I, wait, I think it does.
It's confusing.
Yes, I think it does, yeah, because that's TS 202014. Yes, I think it does, yeah, because that's TS 202014, that's part of consent, right?
I'd like to pull that, please.
Okay. And TS 2020-14. Okay, so, there's a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, and seconded by Counselor Dobrowski, that we receive the rest of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. So, we'll first deal with Counselor LaCoco, the item 2020-12. So, the floor is yours, Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I feel like this is going to be taking candy away from children, but on the playground one, it's $334,000 for the eight playgrounds, plus the other two. I'm, I'm just wondering with COVID and looking at our budget, that maybe we would consider looking at a portion of the eight instead of all eight. Um, I just wanted to put it on the floor, I think we need to be fiscally responsible, especially with COVID and the pandemic and looking at our budget.
Okay, uh, what do you recommend, Mr. CAO? Who would I get to address this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if, Ms. Clerk may want to chime in, but, uh, this is the capital portion of the budget, and it's fully funded from various sources. So, um, it's not going to have a direct impact on the operating budget unless it's part of the operating budget that came from the transfer. And I'm not sure what the breakdown on this is, I'm not sure if Ms. Clerk has that. But many of these projects are funded from, whether it be, uh, OLG sources, or development charges, or other sources, that would not impact on your operating budget bottom line anyway. But I don't know if Ms. Clerk has the funding detail on where we actually funded these from this year.
Ms. Clerk?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have that one off the top of my head, though typically playgrounds we tend to use OLG money for. CAO's correct, these are committed dollars. However, Counselor LaCoco makes a good point, um, from a cash flow standpoint, that would be the benefit of delaying some of these projects. We might want to take a, a pause on this one. I, I do have staff working this week on a report also for June 23rd, just giving an update of the $77 million capital spending we approved for 2020. Um, how many projects are naturally being delayed, just because we, we can't get them off the ground anymore, and how many we still plan to move forward? So, it might be more appropriate to save that discussion maybe for the next meeting.
Okay, maybe we, Eric, Mr. Nicol, did you want to weigh in on this as well, since these are your projects?
I'd like to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, when he's done.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to weigh in and, and give Counsel a bit of an update on, um, the process we followed. So, um, as you know, the capital budget process went through for the approval of 10 playgrounds. Eight of those are included here, and one of them includes the surface improvements, and the other one at Oaks Park is being designed somewhat separately. So, our typical practice is to, to break these up and go after some of the components of it, and take advantage of an economy of scale. So, what we've done is we've given the opportunity to bidders to bid on eight playgrounds, which is more than most municipalities are able to offer. And in doing that, and setting up a, a fixed price, we're getting great value for money by actually asking for them to bid on eight specific playgrounds. So, um, you know, I guess I caution you, if the plan is to continue to put these playgrounds and to improve these playgrounds, we have a great opportunity here with a great design and a contractor that we've vetted through our RFP process. Uh, and we're ready to go to get this work done this year. Um, so, my only concern is delaying this or breaking this up over multiple years will likely mean there's not as good value for money. Uh, and we have some, some costs in our investments to the designs that we started this year. Uh, we would likely have to restart for future years. At the end of the day, it is Counsel's decision, but we're ready to go, and these will be completed before the end of the year.
Thank you for that. I've got Counsel Ryanone, Cario, and Strange, and Peter Angelo. And Dobrowski.
I think, hi, thank you. And I, I really like Lori's comments and Tiffany's comments. I think as we're going forward, as we're looking at our core delivery services to the community, and the challenges that COVID, um, put before us, we're going to have to change some of our service delivery models. Um, I don't know if anybody else has been following, um, the Municipal World podcasts in regards to how municipalities are dealing with the pandemic, and how we have, will have to change our service delivery models as we go forward. But one of them was to, to pause and take a sober second look at how we're doing things and what we're spending things on, and I, I'm going to bring this up under new business at the end. But I really think maybe pausing these, with the, um, the premier extending to June 30th, we don't know if on June 30th he's going to extend to July 30th. Um, numbers were up again in the province today. I think everything is so up in the air right now that I think we need to take maybe a step back on things that people are, that every health official is asking us to scale back on, and that's kids in a playground. Um, I think Counsel's premise on wanting to get more playgrounds improved was amazing, but we didn't envision COVID then, and, um, I don't think we've envisioned it. Uh, and, and maybe I can throw this out to you, Mr. Mayor, the CAO. Have we created a new service delivery model that will deal with COVID? Because I'm hoping that comes back for Counsel to create.
Mr. CAO?
Mr. Mayor, as part of the, uh, plan that we're working on now, there are a number of issues, a number of what I'll call decision, uh, points for Counsel. Uh, that'll be contained in a document, and as each of those decision points on different services and/or, uh, different ways that we may deliver a service, we'll come back by way of individual reports as we move into the post-pandemic stage. Uh, we hope to have those items in that report, uh, probably within the next week or so to Counsel.
Thank you for that. Uh, and Mr. Nicol, question, uh, these parks, if this gets approved, what's the timeline for construction, approximately?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Construction would be ready to go immediately after, um, award. Now, we would, uh, have to coordinate this with some of the safety surfacing that has already been awarded. But we would be wrapping them up, weather permitting, um, in this, the fall of this year.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got Counselor Cario, Strange, Peter Angelo, and Dobrowski.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, I, I'm going to support leaving them in, um, according to what Mr. Nicol said about getting a deal. And post-pandemic, or when this slows down, if there's anything I could see coming forward, would be the city have to invest in more equipment so that we could spread the kids out more. So, I, I can't see cutting down, changing the equipment, or, or upgrading our equipment, uh, and taking the deal that we can get on what we're buying, is buying eight, um, sets of equipment. So, I'm, I'd like to leave it in, I could think of a lot of other things that I could go through the budget and take out. And, uh, depending on whether or not the kids go back to school, there may not be a whole lot of things that they can do at all. This may be one of the things, the only things they can do. And if we have to do more work, uh, to make the playgrounds a little bit bigger, put more equipment in, so we can space them out, spend a little bit more money into, uh, clean them, uh, more often, I think that's what we'll be looking to do in the future. So, I, I'm just gonna vote to leave it alone.
Thank you for that. Counselor Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Counselor Cario. Um, you know, a lot of these, um, communities or, or streets have been waiting a long time for these playground equipment, uh, to get in. And, uh, in the last couple of years, we've been seeing basically 10 a year, and, and everyone I talk to just love it, especially with the artificial turf aspect, uh, instead of the wood chips, as you said before. But, um, you know, I can understand, uh, the health issues because of COVID, but you got to understand, the kids got to get out, you know, after this is, this is hopefully over soon. You know, mental illness is, is going to be a, a big factor in this as well. So, we have to get those kids out, get them playing, and, and keep healthy physically, but also mentally, so I'd like to keep this in as well.
Thank you for that. Counselor Peter Angelo, then Dobrowski.
Thanks, Your Worship, I'm of the same opinion. The only comment I wanted to make is that, when you take a look at the list of parks, it's not just replacement equipment that we're dealing with. There's a couple of parks on here that we've been promising residents that we're going to get built for, for years now, actually. Um, so, I think we need to follow through on that as well, because I know that the residents that live in that area, I've heard from them, and they want to know when their park is coming, so, um, I mean, I, I don't think that we can put the brakes on this at this time.
Thank you, and Counselor Dobrowski.
I'm probably going to repeat a lot of what, uh, my fellow counselors have said, but waiting, I think, will just prolong what we're going to do in the end anyway. And I, I think, as Mr. Nicol said, we're getting cost-effective quotes. Um, these companies are ready, they're ready to build. By pushing this back another six months or a year, who knows how busy these companies will be at that time, and this can prolong the project even further. So, I think, as Counselor Strange has mentioned, we're close to post-pandemic, I'm confident, continue to stay positive, and, and children will be looking for places to play, and as Counselor Cario said, do it safely. So, I'd, I'd like to keep this in as well, and I proceed with the project.
Thank you for that. All right, well, if there's nobody else, uh, do we have a motion? No, we need a motion.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right, we already voted on that.
That one was pulled. Okay.
Yeah, that one was pulled, right? Am I right? We need a mo, or, do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Oh, we have a motion, right. Yeah, Counselor LaCoco?
I'll make the motion that we accept it, accept the report and go with the eight playgrounds, I just wanted to have some discussion on it, thank you.
We have a second for Counselor Campbell? Okay, uh, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you for that. Item 2020-13, Water Main, oh, I'm sorry, no, no. Uh, Counselor Campbell had TS 2020-14.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I do believe this report is from a request that I made on behalf of a, uh, local taxpayer. Here's what I have difficulty with, if you go to the bottom of page one. Staff concluded that substituting existing stop control with yield control throughout the city is not feasible. I wasn't talking about changing all stop signs to yield signs. I just have a strong sense that in many areas, stop signs are not necessary. For example, you drive down Woodgate Street. All the roads that come onto Woodgate don't even have a yield sign. They don't have stop signs, they don't have anything. My daughter lives up in that end of the city, and it blows me away, when I pull out of her street, there's no yield sign there. It's a three-way intersection, and it makes good sense not to have a stop sign there. So, I, I'm sorry, I, I would make a motion that, uh, we return this to staff, and they give us some further consideration.
Okay, do we have any other discuss? Uh, yeah, um, Mr. Bilado, did you want to weigh in on the comments from Counselor Campbell?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. And I think that, that sentence in the report, I think it needs a little bit of elaboration. Each intersection within the city, we review on a case-by-case basis. Under basic rules of the road under the Highway Traffic Act, under these low-volume local road intersections, there is a requirement for the driver to be responsible, regardless if there's a sign there or not. Um, historically, these uncontrolled intersections have been asked to have some form of control, just to reinforce to the, the folks on the road, how to drive properly and assign right-of-way control. So, the request has been from residents to add something where we haven't had anything in the past. Um, it's important to note that we need to follow industry standards and best practices, uh, for when a stop sign is required and when a, a yield sign is required. And it is a function of the available sightlines at that intersection. And that's, that's what we're trying to illustrate in the appendix of this report, is what those requirements are.
Counselor Campbell?
Well, when I look at the situation on Woodgate Street, or Road, um, it works. And I'm sure that there are other areas in our community, in subdivisions, where people, there's a stop sign, and people go through it anyways. I, I'm only suggesting that not all stop signs need to be replaced with yield signs. I'm suggesting that some places, for example, on, on Valley Way and Fourth Avenue, if you sat there as a police officer, I'll bet you could give out 200 tickets a day. It's a four-way stop, nobody stops. If they're not stopping, why don't we put up a yield sign, so at least they get, uh, some knowledge that they got to at least slow down and look?
So, Mr. Bilado, is it possible we could look, are there, maybe there's some, uh, intersections, like the ones that Counsel Campbell's mentioned? So, he's not suggesting we switch them all over, but maybe there's some of them, that it makes sense? Uh, is there any kind of, um, report that could be done in that regard? You know, with some possibilities in the city, what are your thoughts on that?
The challenge that we have right now is that, within local subdivisions, when they were first built, uh, there was, uh, lines because the vegetation hadn't matured. In a lot of the mature subdivisions or older neighborhoods in the city, uh, people have planted gardens and shrubs at the corners, which, which, uh, impeded visibility. So, in a lot of the cases, the stop signs are necessary because the visibility can't be maintained. It doesn't mean that if we don't have a request from a resident to reevaluate that, we'll definitely look at it in, in context of the current situation. But it'd be very difficult for us to go street by street to identify, uh, traffic control that could, or should be removed.
It's your call, yes, Counsel, what do you think? Okay, okay, thank you. So, did you want to just receive it for now, or?
Received and filed.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Campbell, to receive and file, seconded by Counselor Thompson. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved, thank you. Thank you. Communications and comments of the city clerk. So, there's a recommendation that we receive, the Niagara Regional Housing, uh, letter. Yes, Counsel?
What was the recommendation?
Motion by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we receive the letter from Niagara Regional Housing, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Uh, item 7.2, City of St. Catherine's, uh, basically, you know, again, just going back to the feds and, and the province, saying, you know, we want our share of the money. So, recommendations that we receive the report. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dobrowski, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Um, item 7.3, Niagara Region, implications of the new provincial policy statement. Uh, this is, um, largely planning. I didn't know, Mr. Hrlavich, did you have any comment on this 125-page document?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, it is 125 pages, although most of it is the provincial policy statement itself. So, we've had a provincial policy statement since the 1980s, the province has been updating it periodically. And so, they've added a few new provisions into the, uh, provincial policy statement, which, um, basically outlines that the city now has to have a 25-year, uh, supply of land for housing. That doesn't mean greenfields, you know, new subdivisions. Um, the province expects more and more of our housing to come to intensification. Uh, they are looking to the city, well, to every municipality in the province, to change its official plan policies, so that, uh, we do have more diverse neighborhoods, so they're not just, uh, solely single-family, uh, neighborhoods. So, we will see a greater increase in the number of multiple-family unit, uh, buildings in sub, in residential areas. It also has changed, uh, some of the, uh, regulations such that, um, the, um, we do not need to wait for a municipal comprehensive review by the region, uh, for urban boundary expansions. But we do need to then demonstrate that we don't have that, uh, 25-year supply of land. And, uh, they would need to, uh, show that there will be no net increase in, um, urban boundaries. So, if we were to take out from our urban boundaries lands that can't be serviced, we might be able to then add in the appropriate amount of lands that, um, are ea, more easily serviced. So, there's some, uh, additional flexibility built in there, but we still have to justify how we would take those lands out. Uh, I'm not quite sure how we do that when a landowner might have invested in his property, thinking that's in the urban boundary, and he might one day be able to, uh, develop it. And then we're going to say, well, surprise, your land is now outside the urban boundary. So, it's, I don't think it's as easy as it sounds, but they didn't allow for that. And they do allow, um, some changes for employment lands, what we used to call industrial lands. So, they are saying that we need to be protecting those industrial lands, and that means keeping sensitive uses away. Sensitive uses typically being houses, but it could be schools and churches. Um, you might recall last year that we did have, uh, an application for residential development, uh, and, you know, kind of encroaching within the area of, uh, influence from solid steel and washing. Washington Mills that did result in a non-term, or a LPAT meeting or hearing. So again, we need to be more sensitive to applications like that. And they're basically saying, keep residential development away from industrial development because it could impact on the ability for those businesses to continue their operations. And then lastly, it allows for us to identify our long-term employment land needs so that these would be in industrial lands that we might need in the future but wouldn't be able to service today. And as an example of that, it might be something like the QEW corridor from Lyons Creek Road down to Fort Erie. That would be something we might identify as being a future employment corridor, which would be basically preserved for the future. But it doesn't mean that it would be guaranteed that it would come in, but we would be holding it. And if we were looking for additional lands for industry or employment, we would target those lands first. So those are some of the changes that the province has introduced. And, you know, we know some of the other ones, which are basically keeping agricultural land for agricultural purposes, keeping housing out of agricultural areas, not extending services to agricultural areas unless it's to serve a failing of a water or sewer supply. So, and we, we as a council or we as a municipality have to have regard for all of those policies in making land decisions. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hulovich. So we're looking at receiving the report.
It's just a receiving file, isn't it, Your Worship?
Yep. So motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Thompson that we receive and file the report. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you unanimously. Item 7.4 was in addition to our agenda. The Niagara Falls Canada Hotel Association requests for further relief on property tax payment deadlines. The recommendation is that council refer the request to staff for a report. Counselor Peter Angelo and Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I think probably a couple of us were planning on bringing this up on the new business, but I already heard Ms. Clark say that staff was planning on bringing something back for the June 23rd meeting. So perhaps we can just refer this over to the June 23rd meeting. Do we know at this point whether or not other municipalities have sort of extended that tax deadline?
Why don't we ask Ms., yeah, Mr. CAO? Do you want to, okay, Ms. Clark, did you hear the question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We've actually been having weekly area treasurer calls and we have one tomorrow to, we're hoping to line up on a strategy. The only municipality in the Niagara region that has extended, I believe to September 1st, is Grimsby. That was not a recommendation of the treasurer, but rather a decision of the council.
Okay. And can I just ask, yes, Your Worship, I was, I was just wondering, are we tracking what percentage of tax we have coming in at this point? I mean, I know there's probably people in the community who are still paying their taxes and then some who are, I guess, taking relief that we've provided. I'm just wondering what the percentages are for us.
Ms. Clark, do you have a handle on those numbers yet? Are you?
I do. Yes, actually, if you want to look at the April receivables report that was in the consent agenda, I can kind of add some commentary to highlight some items. So in 2018 and 2019, current outstanding taxes as a percentage of taxes due, April 30th, were around the 36% mark. So that's, I guess, what you'd say a normal arrears amount for us. In 2020, at April 30th, current outstanding taxes as a percentage of taxes due was 55, almost 56%. So we've gone up about 20%. I'm hesitant to call them arrears at this point since we did put the waivers in place. It's not really fair to compare April to April this year. We'll have to compare June 30th back to April 30th. But as it stands right now, we're looking at about a 20% increase in arrears and it was about a $10 million increase. And then if you look down at table two on that report, you'll see residential arrears year-over-year have increased by approximately $2.2 million or 14%. But the bigger concern is commercial arrears year-over-year have increased by approximately $7.6 million or 77%. Now, that's not to say these businesses can't pay. This could just be a business decision because we've offered that waiver, so they could be making the decision to preserve their cash flow. But that's kind of where we're sitting right now and staff's just putting together the May receivables report. I believe we've brought in about another $5 million, but we'll have that for you on the next agenda as well.
Okay. If that helped? Okay, thank you. Counselor Carrillo?
Thank you, Your Worship. A friendly amendment to that would be, could we maybe have the staff include what the municipality is doing, what else they're doing for the residents and taxpayers of our community? This was a big help, but I think it would be nice to see everything that they're doing. I know what the province is doing, I know what the feds are doing. I'd like to see on a piece of paper, you know, what we're doing. This is a big one, but if there's other things that we're doing, it would be nice to see them so we could actually have a look at what we're doing to help them. Because I think that the way things are going, this could go on for a long time.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Iannone?
When, when Ms. Clark brings back that report, is it going to also talk about extending residential, the residents' ability to extend the deferral of the penalty fee?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, so that we were not just dealing with tourism and commercial, but also the residents in there, because we're getting emails in regard to that all the time.
Counselor Carrillo?
It was never split. It's always been everybody, just so everyone knows.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk, I remember someone made a motion, I can't remember anymore, all the discussion.
As of right now, we don't have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
But the motion would be, or the recommendation is that council refer the request to staff for a report and also to include what else the municipality is doing to help the taxpayer.
Okay, and then with the report to come back on the 23rd at our next council meeting, right? Yeah, okay. Counselor Campbell making the motion. Second by Counselor Dubrowski. There's no further discussion. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 7.5, proclamation request seniors month, and the request is that June be proclaimed as seniors month. Motion by Counselor Thompson. Second by Counselor Campbell. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item 7.6, request to proclaim June 19th as World Sickle Cell Day in Niagara Falls. Motion by Counselor Strange, second by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved as well. And item 7.7, flag raising request for Pride Niagara, annual pride flag raising for the week of May 29th through June the 6th. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor LaCoco. There's no discussion to that. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. Onto resolutions, Mr. Clerk? No resolutions, so bylaws.
First, second, and third reading, Your Worship.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, second by Counselor Dubrowski to give the bylaws a first, second, and third reading. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. And now into new business. Do we have any new business today? No, seeing none. Oh. That was fast. Okay, Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said earlier, I've been listening to the Municipal World podcast in regards to how municipalities are dealing with pandemics and keeping track of all of the experts' comments on a second wave. Are we doing anything in regards to creating a mitigation strategy when a second wave hits? The premier, the Prime Minister has acknowledged that we're going to have a second wave. I'm just reading very recent CBC epidemiologists are bracing for the second wave. It may come in September. The experts are all saying we're going to get one and I'm wondering what mitigation steps we've put in place anticipating that, hoping it's, it's not bad. But every article that you open that has been dated in the last four or five days will tell you, tells you that the second wave is often worse than the first. And rather than see the scramble that we had in the first place, what are we doing in regards to creating a mitigation strategy for a second wave?
Mr. CAO, can you answer that one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated earlier, the report that we've been putting together that will talk about post-COVID items in there, there will be a series of recommendations. Some of those recommendations will be focused on as you head out of this stage and what are we going to do in terms of how we deliver our services and what does that look like to put in place if we do enter into a second phase? Some of them will be inherent, that they will always be part of our new procedures, new practices, but there will be some, whether that be some additions or changes to facilities or the way we enter buildings or the way we staff buildings or the way that the public uses our buildings, that those will be coming in a number of subsequent either reports or recommendations that will be coming to council in the months to come. We don't expect to have this report and have all the answers for you, but we're asking staff to identify things that you can see changing or will in all likelihood change in, as we move forward. Identify those today so we can be reporting back to council in the months to come on how our services are going to be delivered differently.
Counselor?
Thank you. And when you're talking about how we're physically doing service delivery, are we also talking about the mental health aspect of it? Counselor Strange mentioned that about the kids and the playgrounds earlier, but are you also looking at in regards to, people react very differently in regards to anxiety and fear in regards to catching this disease? Are we looking at a mental health aspect, not just for the public? Because we'll have people who are not comfortable anymore with face-to-face meetings and that's generally how we do business. We don't let the public into the buildings anymore, but that's generally how we've had people, how we have done our normal process of business. There's going to be people not comfortable in doing that again. There'll be staff members we have that are not comfortable in regards to having more people working in the building. A lot of people are working from home. Are we looking at staggering staff in? I'm looking at some, some potentials of different municipalities. Are we all, so I think we need to make sure that we're dealing not with just the physical aspect of it, but with the mental health and anxiety aspect of it also. Is that, is that going to be within your report?
Mr. CAO?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would say that a number of the recommendations built in is inherently looking at those kind of issues. I don't think we're going to have a separate mental health recommendations or reports, but in terms of considering how we're going to return, whether it be work-from-home options, whether it be video conferencing for meetings, whether it's setting up private appointments, whether it's screening at the door, whatever those are, those will be, mental health issues are, are sort of in the fabric of making those decisions. So everybody's conscious of how this is going to change as different departments and directors are bringing forward their recommendations. Those will be part of the buildup. I know we're in constant contact with our regional colleagues who are more experts than we are on the medical side and they keep providing input and feedback to us as we move through this as well.
Thank you for that. Counselor?
And Mr. Mayor, I, I might want to recommend to council, today's podcast was preparing communities for the new world ahead. I don't know if everybody's receiving the same emails from Municipal World. I had signed up for it a couple of years ago, but there's been a whole series on it and how different municipalities are dealing with different ways, but they are all, the expert today was on, I'm going to make sure that I, limitabilities. And it was the second part of a series. He had been on the last time also. And I just want to make sure that we're incorporating and maybe so that, I heard the comment, Reno, we're going to listen to the experts. These are the experts that Municipal World has on doing the interviews with the moderator. And it's been really interesting to listen to how everybody's dealing with it. The other one I wanted to ask about is in regards to preparing communities for what will be our new world ahead. In, in talking about the money that the federal government gave for marketing Niagara Falls, and I know you were on CHH today talking about how important it is to bring people back here. And it is important to open our economy and it is important to open our businesses, but I think we also, on the other hand, have to make sure that the public understands that we're doing that safely. And, and I don't think that's the message that's getting out. So as we work to open business again, can we also include when we are doing that, giving public information on how we're doing it to help them feel safe? Because it's, it's okay to say, oh, I think you should feel safe, but you cannot dictate how people feel. So I think the more information we give them, the more confident they're going to be that maybe they don't have to worry about their health.
Well, Counselor, I can tell you, I've done, I don't know how many interviews, including today, I did a couple every day, and I've been really expressing the idea that we've got a full COVID recovery plan even within our tourism sector called safetoplay.ca and safetostay.ca. And I've outlined a bunch of the measures and protocols that we're implementing and some of them are very innovative that are going to make people feel safe because they will be much safer. So I agree with you and we've said the same thing. When it's safe to bring them here, we're going to do it in a safe way and we've already got the plan. Matter of fact, Minister of Tourism said we're the first tourism destination to have a full recovery plan and brand it. And we've been sharing it and discussing it with other jurisdictions in the U.S. and around, and we're studying what they're doing in Disney World and Las Vegas and a number of other areas around the world as well. So we're really confident going forward that we're doing all the most innovative remedies and protocols that are out there today.
Sure.
And Mr. Mayor, maybe then at one point you can do that presentation, maybe walk through safetoplay.ca and what the plan is at a council meeting to the residents, because they do watch and, and the paper reports on it. So maybe you could have that presentation at council.
Well, we could invite the tourist industry if they'd like to come. I mean, it's their, it's their event, it's their protocol, it's their branded event that they're going to be launching. It's not yet launched, but they've been announcing it and tweaking it, but the website's not gone live yet, so we could certainly ask them.
So safetoplay.ca is not live yet?
No.
Okay.
Because we're not safe to play yet and we're not safe to, like, we're, until the province has opened up, we're preparing for it.
Didn't you think we could prepare to have maybe somebody come and make a presentation so that the community can watch it and if they miss it, they can re-watch it on the replay or log on and watch it on our city site?
Yeah, well, we can definitely invite them, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to comment something?
Yeah, I just want to, we don't talk about this every day, but the tourist industry, the city, Serge Filicetti have been working. In fact, we had a meeting today at 10 o'clock for an hour with all of the major people in the tourist industry. There have been planning every day with changes that are going on and to make sure that we're in the right position at the right time to really move forward with this. And there's all kinds of meetings and decisions being made between the city and the industry. So I'm very confident about what's happening.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I, and I think that's fantastic. And Counselor Thompson just said there's many decisions being made with the city and the industry and how to move forward. I don't, I assume we're, we're the city and we, we haven't been updated on those. So I think if, if council could get an update on that, that would be great. And even more so once, once that's all put together, then the residents can get an update because the, the concern is, and you read it all the time, that people are coming down here, so how are we making it safe to have people come down here? And I think that can help, help maybe alleviate some of the anxiety that the community has.
Absolutely. So we'll definitely invite them down. Did you have any other new business, Counselor?
No, thank you.
Okay. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things. I guess this question would be for Mr. Todd. In that report that's coming back, will there be a transit update? I know that there's some other communities, specifically Ottawa, that they just came out that they're the first city that is making it mandatory for the staff and riders to wear masks on their bus. So will that report include a transit update?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it will. I don't think, Carla's not on the line, I don't think today, but yes, it will. On any of the financial implications, we can also give an update as to what's happening. There has been messaging gone out on all of our transit facility, our transit buses this week that are recommending wearing masks. this week that are recommending wearing masses, masks, although we have not made it mandatory yet. And we're in the throes of having all of our buses retrofitted with driver bio-shields to protect the driver, and Ms. Stowe can give an update on that at the next meeting as well.
Thank you. And my last item, I just wanted to say how saddened and appalled I am at the things that are going on in the United States. And just before I came here, a friend posted something, and I wanted to read it to you, and then I have a motion. It doesn't make sense that we still need to keep talking about this. As someone who has felt the effects of racism and discrimination my whole life for my ethnicity and name, as well as being from a family of refugees, I have always made sure to stand up and speak out, and now is no different. We can't be silent while our brothers and sisters continue to suffer under the boot of oppression. It hits too close to home, and it should for you too, because we're all humans. My proximity to whiteness and the privilege that's attached doesn't escape me. I can hide my name, I can hide where I'm from, I can hide, I can appear to fit in. The same can't be said for someone who is persecuted for the color of their skin alone. It's a tough thing to talk about, and it's easy for these sorts of movements to turn into a virtue signaling party or a lazy Martin Luther King mem share. We need real change, systematic change. I can't say exactly what that looks like, but some tough conversations need to be had. Deep introspection and reflection are needed, change at fundamental level, this needs to stop. And the gentleman's name is Jihad Yahia. And my motion, a lot of other cities have anti-racism committees. We don't in Niagara Falls, and I think it would be a first step, it's a small first step, but I would like to see an anti-racism committee formed in Niagara Falls.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Do we have any other discussion to the, to the motion? Okay, so we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, I forgot one thing.
Okay.
Thank you. At the last meeting, I had asked for the names of our EOs, the people on the, our EOC committee and the people on your Back to Business Committee, and I was told we would receive them. We haven't received them yet. So could those please be sent out to members of council? But I also wanted to highlight that the information we're getting from the region, Mr. Mattson sends it to us, and it's the Regional Emergency Operations Centre Weekly Update. And I'd like to know if City Council can get a Niagara Falls EOC Operation Centre Weekly Update. We get the, the same update that the public gets from Dale Morton, and it comes out when the province changes, but can we get our own EOC update to members of council? That would be very beneficial for us.
Chief? Chief, did you want to weigh in on this? Chief, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to find my mute button. Certainly, we can create a, there's a form that's within the EOC that we can create with regards to an update on a weekly basis.
That'd be great, thank you. And what's taking place to date and then moving forward?
Taking place to date might take time to get. There's probably, we'll have a look at it. I just, the timing on that might be a bit.
Do you need a motion for that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, you know what? Let me first, I'm going to call up the CAO before we get to that point.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we have tried to, a couple of times a week, give counselors updates through emails of what we've been doing and decisions we've been making. We've also given two or three updates at this council in PowerPoint presentations, I think at two of the four meetings we've had. We're trying to keep council as informed as we can, and as we have those decisions made, we try to get, Dale Morton is very conscious on the EOC calls of putting together two or three items that may have been small decision points that day. We try to get them out to you just to keep you, we were hoping that was enough, but that's, council needs more information than that, we're happy to provide it.
Well, that's a part of the reason why we created the FAQ section of the website, to minimize the amount of effort. And I don't know at what point we become micromanaging. You know, we've got an EOC that's dealing in, if you aren't happy with it, change EOC or change things, but if you're not happy with it, or you need more, what's the concern, Counselor, that you're not getting enough information, or what is the concern?
Mr. Mayor, I've asked for the names of the EOC and your Back to Business Community, Committee since the day you announced them, and I think they're positive and proactive, but we are members of council, we were elected to help run the business of the city, and I don't think it's out of line to ask for that information. And when you look at what we are provided for by the region, it's not micromanaging, it's simply informing us.
Right.
And, and all, and all I would like is the same kind of Emergency Operations Centre report from the city of Niagara Falls as opposed to from the region. It's just simply information.
Well, I'm not, I don't even know what to say. I mean, the CAO's been sending us regular updates. When things change, you get emails from the chief, you get them from me. I don't know if you want another one from, who would it come from? Who would the other one come from?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you, if you've been, well, you're at the region, so I'm sure you're following it, but this came from Anne-Marie Norio, who's your Situation Unit Coordinator, and then it's copied, I guess, the rest of the committee whose names are listed on here, Dr. Herji, Ron Tripp, Kevin Smith, Patricia Martel, Grant Durfee. It just gives a lot more information than we're receiving, and I'd just like it in one report. Like, is that difficult?
Well, it's not that it's difficult, Counselor, just we're already giving you all the information. I'm not sure what else you want us to give you. We're already giving you all the high points. I don't, you want minutes? What are you looking for?
No, I don't need minutes. What I'm asking is, the chief just said, yes, you could put, do that type of report, and when I said, can we have things that have been done up to date, he said, oh, that would take a little bit longer. I think I'd like a little bit more than the updates we're getting, which are simply like eight lines of what the province has provided that day. And I will, I, and if I'm wrong, I will go through my emails when this meeting's done to see if we've had any EOC updates or EOC information, but I'm pretty sure to date we have not had EOC overviews or EOC updates. We have city updates, but we don't have what your EOC committee's doing.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, that's the updates from the EOC, because all of those action items are coming out of the EOC. And the updates you're getting from the regional clerk are really just the regional public works numbers pretty much on a daily basis, just giving you updates on cases, and that's all coming out of public work.
Public health.
Public health, sorry, public health. And, you know, any of those updates you're getting from council that are coming from myself or Dale Morton are action items and items that have been decided upon and are coming out of the EOC, not on a daily basis, sometimes if we have something to report on a daily basis, but like I say, I believe we've been getting a couple out a week anyway to council, trying to keep them updated on what we've been doing.
Counselor DeBroski?
So if you could...
Yes, Counselor?
No, I can speak after Counselor DeBroski.
Counselor DeBroski?
Yeah, just through the mayor to Counselor Iainoni, the, the updates that we received from Dale Morton, I think they include some provincial updates, but more or less they're municipal updates. I think the last one we received was about cooling stations in the city, about homelessness, about street sweeping, so I think we are getting the proper updates. I feel we are anyway. My fellow council members can speak to it, but I'm unsure of what else we're looking for additionally, but I feel like we've been provided with the necessary updates, especially from a municipal level, and Dale's been doing a great, he's updated from a provincial standpoint as well. I'm confused.
Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think from my perspective, we are getting those, those emails from Dale, but those are the ones that go out to the public as well. The public receives them pretty much the same time that we do. I think what Counselor Iainoni and myself are looking for is more detailed decision-making, why did we do this, here's some of our options, that, that sort of thing.
That's micromanaging. Why do you need to know, why did we make decisions? Our job is to make the decisions, and you're asking us why? We're not, if you, this, then we definitely will need a motion of this council, because you're asking them to do a lot more work than what they're doing, and it won't change the outcome. You're just asking for all the micromanaging details. That's what that is. So if that's what you want, make that motion.
No, I'm not saying that's what I want. What, what I am saying is, a lot of times, the public gets the same information that we do at the same time, or we hear it on CHCH. We don't know the information in front of the public, and when people ask us questions, we don't know. That's all I'm saying.
Counselor, I'm not sure that's accurate, because I, we make every effort to try to get that information out to council first. You may be reading at the same time, but I think we try to make every effort. Ms. Morton tries to get that out to council before it's going out to anybody else.
We don't sit on anything, I promise you. We get it out as soon as we decide, and we have these daily meetings. Counselor DeBroski?
And just speaking to that again, in terms of cooling stations, cooling stations, for example, I don't think we need a full report on the strategy that we're preparing for cooling stations. I think the high-level point is that we're working on cooling stations. I'm just unsure of exactly what my fellow counselors are, what's that? And the street sweeping, I mean, street sweeping, we all know why we're street sweeping, it's after winter and we need the street sweep. So I'm just, I'm unsure of, like, the mayor's to maybe make a motion, but I'm unsure exactly what my fellow counselors are looking for in terms of more detail.
Chief wants to speak.
The chief? I'm sorry. Chief?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, to you and to the council. I've just looked at the memos to council from Dale Morton, well, actually from the CAO crafted by Dale Morton, and compared them to the region's reports, and they're, they're exactly the same thing as what we would provide. So we wouldn't get any more detail than what that is with regards to filling out another IMS form to provide to council. So those seem to be capturing everything that we are deciding at our EOC at a high level.
So unless there's a motion to this regard, I think, I think the EOC is working awfully hard, and I want to remind everyone, we don't have full staff, full complement, that we're playing catch-up. It's been, it's been very difficult. Our staff are stressed. We talk about mental health. Our staff are under immense stress as well, trying to do their jobs from home, trying to do jobs on Zoom meetings. It's not easy, and yet they still come together on these EOC calls, and I'm going to tell you, they solve all the issues of the city, from homelessness to cooling stations to issues in parks, kids vandalizing, to you name it, they're dealing with all the issues. So, you know, unless you're unhappy with the approach that they're taking, I think they're doing an outstanding job. I really do. So unless there's a motion to change the way the reporting is done, then we'll move on to the next issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before I even asked for this at the last meeting, I kind of polled counselors from all the other, all the other city councils, and they get separate and aside EOC updates, what took place, some even get minutes. I don't even, I don't want minutes. But they know who's on them, they know who sits on the committee, they know the issues that were put forward, they know the conversation that took place, they know why the decisions were made. Are you, is, is your point that that's too much work for us to be updated in that way? Like, I'm kind of confused that you seem to be irritated, we want that kind of information. We're not saying, oh, don't do things the way you're doing. We just want to understand why it's being done that way.
Why do you want to understand why it's being done that way? You're micromanaging. You don't have faith in your professionals here, that you think the elected officials know more than the professionals.
Jim, I didn't say that. I said other councils are up to date and are being given that information. I'm sorry that you think it's micromanaging, wanting to be informed, but as an elected official, I think any policy that any committee we have is creating should be vetted through or informed to your council.
Okay, Counselor, if you want to make a motion, we can deal with it here, because I don't want to debate it. If you want to make a motion...
You've already, you've, you've pretty much decided it's not going to go through. You listened, I just listened to the conversation that's taking place around there. I guess I would ask, what, I don't understand what the secrecy is.
There's no secrecy, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Yes, Counselor CAO.
And what is, what is the offense of the question? Because you seem to be offended we've asked it.
Counselor CAO?
Well, I can tell you, Counselor, I'm, I'm not offended by the question, I'm just confused by the fact that we have been providing this council as much as any other council is getting. And I can tell you, I'm on a call a couple of times a week with 12 CAOs from across the region, and many times the question is, what's Niagara Falls doing? We're waiting to see what Niagara Falls is taking a lead on. So a lot of them are following our lead on many of these issues, and we're reporting back to council on many updates. I think the confusion is, we just have to rename the council update to EOC update, because what you're getting in that regular council update are decisions, I think we had one yesterday or one Monday, or what's today?
It's Tuesday.
We had, I think we had one on the last two days that were out to council, just on two or three snippets that were discussions we had at the EOC. They come out to you as a council update, they were decisions that were made in the EOC that day. And we've had a number of decision points that were made at council here during the last couple of council meetings on you confirming or reconfirming in a presentation all of the items that we have done at the EOC, whether it was changes to transit, whether it was closure of parks, whether it was closures of the arenas, not charging, doing rear-door boarding on transit. All of those decisions were captured and approved by this council after the EOC had dealt with them, and we had updated counts on all of those. So I, I guess I'm not, I'm not upset that you're raising the issue, Counsel, I'm upset by the fact that I think we're providing as much information as any municipality is giving on all of these issues, and I think it's an unfair characteristic, characterization to say that you're not getting that kind of information.
So, Mr. Mayor, could we then be provided with the names of the people on the EOC? Because it's been very confusing. I know Counselor LaCoco started with asking and was told she wasn't permitted those names. Other counselors have been permitted those names. I've asked, it's been three weeks since I was told we would get them, we still don't. And do you call it micromanaging to know who's actually making these decisions?
Okay, didn't, didn't counsel approve a bylaw with all those names?
I think, I'm sorry, CAO.
No, I didn't. Victor, I have asked for those names numerous times and been told no.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe. Your mic's got to be tilted. Mr. CAO?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the names, the positions are contained, and maybe the chief wants to jump in, the positions of who's on the EOC are contained in the emergency plan that this council has approved. I'm not sure what the names matter to the counselor, because we probably have two or three backups to every person that's on that list as we go through our training. You're probably talking about a list of 30 or 40 people that are in one way involved in this. It involves almost every person that you could name that you know as counsel in the entire corporation. So I don't know what, I might as well just give you a staff directory, because that's just about everybody that at one point or another is involved in the EOC at some level or not.
Mr. Mayor, is that the same way it works at the region?
I don't know.
Well, you've been provided the list at the region, because I've spoke to a number of your fellow regional counselors, and they have the list.
Then ask them. I don't have the list. I don't have the list, and I don't look at the list. I'm focused on our list here at the city, so I don't...
All right.
Any other new business? Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to ask a question. I know that the premier has been talking about opening up various regions around Ontario, depending on their numbers. I'm just wondering if at some point, who becomes part of that conversation? Is it entirely the province's responsibility to just pick a region and open them? Is it in consultation with perhaps the...
Public health.
The regional government that's in that area? Is it the public health unit that's in that area? At any point, I guess what I'm trying to get at, at any point, do we become part of that conversation?
Well, I can tell you, right now, it's 100% done by the province, top-down. They do work in consultation with all the public health departments, but they don't have any say. They've asked that they be allowed to open up regionally, and the province at first said no way, and then they've been pivoting and saying, okay, we'll consider it, but it's 100% up to the province what happens next. So I mean, we can give opinions all day long, but, including public health, but it's up to the provincial public health.
Okay, thanks. Next question then. Do we have a timeline? Has the province at least released a timeline, and when they're going to start opening up regions? And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, at that point in time, whose roadmap are we going to be following? Is it going to be ours? Is it going to be the region's, or is it going to be the province? And I just want to know that if the province already has a date in mind that they're going to start opening up regions, that I'd like to have our plan in place by that date. That's all. I just want to work backwards on this one.
Okay. Ask our CAO away.
Well, thank you, Counselor, and we are working towards that, and our belief is that if you look at the hierarchy, that once it goes to a regional approach, a lot of that direction will be coming through the regional public health agencies, that, that we have always taken our direction from, whether it be the provincial health officials or regional. So we're, we're aware of those timelines, and we're trying to get our work done so that it coincides with that regionalized approach, so that we want to be able to be ready to open up as we need to if our region comes sooner than, say, the GTA or so. open up as we need to if our region comes sooner than, say, the GTA or something like that. So, we're well aware of that.
And Your Worship, I guess I just want to be ready. You know, depending on the regions that they open up, obviously Niagara's going to be unique in the sense that we're going to be a place that people are going to want to come to. So, I'm going to want to know that we have our own plan in place at that time.
Yeah, and especially, they're looking toward a place, I guess, because our rate is actually pretty good compared to Toronto, Windsor, and Ottawa. Our rate's fairly low. So, yeah. Any other new business? Counselor Dubrowski?
One relating to development charges, and it's me trying to get a better understanding of how the region allocates their development charges when it pertains to apartment buildings versus condominiums, versus residential, versus townhomes. And I'm not sure if it's feasible, but seeing if we can maybe request from the region that they come to council and provide either a presentation or an update to council on how those development charges are allocated, how much they are, and just so we can understand better for future development here in the city, as well as from a municipal level as well, maybe have staff come back. And it doesn't have to be the next month or two months. I'm sure we're working on more important things, but maybe having staff come back as well and providing that presentation.
Okay, Mr. CaO?
If I could make a suggestion, and I'll look to Ms. Clark, but we deal with a consultant. We've dealt with them for a number of years, Hampson. I'm sure they could put together a sort of a...
Summary?
Just a presentation or PowerPoint that they could get to council that could give some background information as to how those fees are calculated. They'd probably be the ones to do that.
Great. The second one quick. I'm trying to go as quick as I can.
Do we need a motion for that, or do we...would you like it make it easier?
Yeah, if I can make the motion that we...perfect.
Motion by Counselor Dubrowski, and second by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we get a report back through staff from...what was it?
Our consultant.
Our consultants, Hampson, on the DCs from the region.
Perfect.
All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you.
Second one quick. Teresa Park on Gale Avenue. I had a couple of residents contact me, and I know that park's currently under construction. It's almost finalized. But they had some concerns regarding nighttime activity, and I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Nickel can provide a quick update, but whether or not we have plans for security through the night, or some sort of lighting up at that park just to deter any nighttime activity.
Mr. Nickel, do you have any updates for us on security at the Gale Park?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at Teresa Park, when it's completed, we do have some parks that have some motion sensors at night where we know we have some nighttime security issues. It's really not our practice to put in permanent nighttime lighting, because that actually encourages people to be in the parks overnight. So, I'd be more than happy to work with a counselor on receiving some of those resident information, work with them directly. And we can start with some security patrols at first, and if the need is there, we can definitely look at putting up some nighttime motion sensor lights and do whatever else we can to try to make sure that's a safe place for the residents.
Perfect. Last one.
Two...just before we jump on, Counselor Dubrowski, yeah, because I know two schools of thought on that. You have a light, and you attract people, or it's dark and you attract people. So, I've seen both sides, and typically, I know through a lot of SEP TED studies and whatnot, they recommend lighting. So, it's something we definitely...that's why we took out all our berms in our parks, because first, we did it to shelter the park, then we realized a lot of things were happening that shouldn't happen, so we took our berms out. So, definitely a good thing to have a look at, for sure.
100% pros and cons, and the residents obviously don't want to work backwards. So, that's great, Mr. Nickel. Last one, June is Pride Month here, across the nation in North America. The Pride Crosswalk that council approved back in January, February, and I know we're doing some work on the street outside on Queen Street. Is there an update on that? Maybe Mr. Billado can provide an update on the Pride Crosswalk installation.
Mr. Billado or Mr. Nickel, who wants to talk about the crosswalk?
I could start. So, the crosswalk is scheduled to be installed next week pending completion of the paving. We're expecting the material to be delivered on June the 9th, and it'll be installed shortly thereafter. It's arriving from the state, and we're having some delays with the delivery.
Perfect. Have we...has staff worked with...either communications staff worked with Pride Niagara on some sort of virtual unveiling, or...
You know, that's a good question. Do you know, are you guys aware of a connection with Dale Morton and her department on what we're doing with the communications piece on that?
And I know we're in a weird time, but I just don't want to get it lost in the shuffle.
Don't speak all at once.
I can coordinate through Dale.
Okay, that's great. Perfect. That's all I got. Thanks. Thank you. Any other new business?
I'll second Counselor Thompson's.
Okay, motion for adjournment, Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? Thank you. We'll see on the 23rd of June, 1 o'clock.